Good evening. Like they call the North Augusta City Council Study Session from Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order. I got a nice little turnout tonight. Thank you all for being here. It's good to see folks in the, in the audience. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our City Administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as per our normal routine, we'll have the agenda review for next week, then we'll have part of details from all the directors. And also we'll have under Mayor's Matters, two focus items. The first will be a presentation from our Director of Public Works, Tom Cesar, on the Natural Resources Conservation Service Grant. That's the grant that's just under a million dollars we got from the federal government. So Tom's going to lay out what that grant actually does and the locations at which it would be applied. And then also Kelly Zier and I are going to be talking through about an item about changing the election dates here in the city of North Augusta and have a discussion about that. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into the agenda review and we'll move directly into old business. And I've got Tommy Paradise sitting here in case there are questions from the DIAS. But the first three items here under Planning and Development Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, and twenty twenty-five dash fifteen are the second readings of the impact fee ordinances. We've had a lot of discussion on this over the course of method of study sessions and the presentation that we got from Carson Vice. And so there's no changes to the ordinance at this point in time. Again, the first ordinance here under twenty-five dash thirteen is implementing the procedures. Item twenty twenty-five dash fourteen is establishing what the impact fee charges are. And then twenty twenty-five dash fifteen allows for us to figure out what the impact fees are for the properties outside the city limit as they attach into, into the city through the annexation agreements. So with that, I have no other updates for the council this time on those three items, but I will pause. Any questions for myself or Mr. Paradise?
I think we're good.
All right. Moving forward, also under Planning and Development, we'll have item number, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, amendment Article nine, signs, definitions, related to halo illumination of the North Augusta Development Code, Chapter eighteen of the City of North Augusta, South Carolina Code of Ordinance. This is the second reading for this item. This had to do with neon light versus halo light. And so this would allow for halo lighting, which is essentially backlighting in downtown mixed use one and two here in this area. And again, I think we've talked this pretty well in depth at the previous study session and also the previous council meeting. So I will pause for any questions from council members on this item. Hearing none, moving on to item number twelve, Finance, Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, amending the Business License Ordinance, City of North Augusta, under the class given here, required by Act one seventy-six of two thousand twenty. Again, this is a template that we got through the Municipal Association of South Carolina. It's best practice to make sure we are aligned with the annual State of South Carolina Business License laws. And because, you know, approximately forty percent of our general fund revenue is business license fees, taxes, that it would be important for us to be in compliance with the State of South Carolina's rules. So again, you should expect as council members knew and heard, but this is an item you'll see pretty much every budget season as part of the State of South Carolina's requirements.
Yeah, this is like the third time we've had.
Hearing no comments, we'll move on to the last item of old business, item number thirteen, Engineering and Public Works, Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, granting easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina for placement of facilities. This will also be the second reading. And this has to do, again, with a piece of city land that's over by exit five. So if I walk from Route twenty-five at exit five, from the self-storage lot to the standalone emergency department, to the true hotel, to a privately owned lot, and then there's a city lots next to that. And so Dominion is putting a underground natural grass line going from south to north to service some of the neighborhoods north of Interstate twenty. So as they blow through underneath Interstate twenty, which they have permission to do through DOT, they would need to have access to city property there. One for a lay down yard, which I've already approved at my level of authority as the administrator, but for you all as the council, it's giving permanent rights of easement for this underground pipe to go underneath that land to go into other lands going forward. So again, this is something that we had discussed. I'd shown a map of the property that was affected. Again, no objections from the staff. And our recommendation was this would be in the best interest of a lot of our citizens that live north of Route twenty. And so we had recommended approval of this, and this passed on first reading. And so this will be your second reading for this item. I'm going to have Linda Williamson come sit next to me here in case there are budget questions. All right, we're going to move into new business. And broadly speaking, the five items here under new business, there are more than five, but the first five are specific to the budget. So ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five are all related to the fiscal year and calendar year twenty twenty-six budget. And so the first ordinance there, twenty-five dash twenty-one, is for adopting the budget, which is general fund budget for City of North Augusta. The second item there, number twenty-two, is the levying of the annual tax on the properties. Number twenty-three is establishing the water service charges, which is establishing the rate structure for water fees. Number twenty-four is establishing the wastewater fees. And number twenty-five is establishing the sanitation, you know, the trash service fees for the upcoming calendar and fiscal year. And so we've got some other items to talk through after that, but those are the, the new items that we'll have. I made a budget presentation in the study session previous, over two weeks ago now, for you all to consider. I had some feedback from councilors. One of them was from Councilman Philak about the headings as far as miscellaneous to reflect more about revenues from events. So I believe that's been amended to reflect that. I had some individual discussions here from the DIAS, but I did not receive a quorum of guidance as far as changes to the budget. And so the budget from, that was presented two weeks ago till today is the same minus the administrative change we did from one of the headings. So that's what's here before you today. We did a pretty in-depth discussion at the last study session, but I and Linda are available, as are any directors, to answer any other questions about the proposed budget as is before you.
And we do have the budget hearing next Monday at five thirty, right?
That's correct. That, Mr. Mayor, that'll be the opportunity for the, the general public to make any comments or give feedback to the council and the administration about the budget. Hearing no comments, we'll move over to ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, Designating a High Enforcement Towaway Zone Riverside Village First Reading. And to that, I'm going to push it over to Assistant City Administrator JD McCauley for explanation on that one, along with the following resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, for the history park.
I'll take both of those. All right. So this is a continuation on the presentation a few months ago. You got for Phase One of parking and pedestrian safety improvements in Riverside Village area. We're looking to establish a, what it says here, which is a towing enforcement, high enforcement zone through Riverside Village. As you can see, in red is where this zone would be established. And what that does is it would put everyone on notice that you are susceptible to being towed if you are not in a specifically designated enlarged parking space. So this would be if you're parked in the yellow, which is no parking in South Carolina, and also by our ordinance in the city, if you're parked on the curb, or if you're parked, you know, longer than you should be in a, in a parking space, or parked illegally in any, any manner. So you'd be towed away. And what we would do with this is we would designate this zone with signs at the, at the entrances of all these areas. We currently have a, an RFP out for, for towing services that would, that would facilitate this. And that closes on Friday, October twenty-fourth, at twelve noon. And so what this towing service would do would be remove the illegally parked vehicle and put it in a tow yard not too far. I believe it's no more than five miles away for the person to retrieve it. So we're looking to get guidance and approval from council with this.
Yes, I hate to say, but that's pretty good. But so you said the signs would be, when they go in, will there be signs right, like over here at the old skating rink? You know, they've got the signs on the wall that says we'll be towed. Will there be signs close to that? Because a friend of mine came out the other week from Brink Tavern, no car. So I mean, I used to want, you know, people got to be aware that.
Yes, ma'am. That is a, that is a big part of this campaign is communication. And that's why this ordinance would have the signs at the entryway. As you can see in the red, it starts just on this side of Bluff Avenue. And so what the area you're referring to is, is actually private property, but we would have entrance signs to let you know, hey, you're in a high enforcement area, tow way is, is enforced. And in every place that you park right now in Riverside Village, there are signs to tell you how long you can be there. We just, this would help us enforce those existing signs as well.
So also, this is a part of our longer term plan within Riverside Village Parking, and JD's been the lead on this. But, you know, the, the project that you all approved as a council will start to fix some of our parking issues in Riverside Village, which is the pedestrian bollard project. So where we have a great number of our infractions of people parking in places they ought not to be parking, has to do with parking on the sidewalk in front of Swank, or Southbound, or that, that whole spot there is a little shaky as far as illegal parking goes. But by adding those bollards, that's going to reduce the amount of spaces you have to deal with. And now you're really going to have to deal with kind of that center island over there by the Crown Plaza. And then you're going to see some spots that I see it all the time, as do you, where citizens and visitors may park in places that got the yellow curbs and say, hey, no parking. And there'll just be a spot there and they'll, they'll grab it anyway. So that's, that's the intention of this, is it's, it's.
On the towing, I know they have Big Toe, a sign for Big Toe towing on the private property. Now, will this towing interfere with, and I guess Luke, like, you know, the, how we, you know, you at this rig, this week you'll do this rig, next week the next tow, and the next week. That will, is it one just towing company that's going to handle all of this?
In order to have this being viable for our citizens, it's going to have to be a contract that's bid by various towing companies. So unlike the current rotation, that's where it goes for public safety when they have an accident or they're responding to a call for service, and they are calling the tow truck company. It's going to be hard for citizens to keep track of who's on that particular week. So for the high enforcement area, that's going to be strictly, you know, a bid process. I suspect it'll be either a one or two-year contract, depending on how we negotiate that. That action will still have to come to the council for consideration. But this is the first step of that, which is just establishing the zone of where towing enforcement would be.
And part of that has to be on the sign as well, to people know where to, where to call, where to get their car. And if this goes forward, the second reading, you would have the award of that contract behind this as well. It's already out for bid right now.
So is this going to impact part, the parking meters, people being towed there as well?
Eventually, yes, it would. But the first, the first step of this is to get people out of the obviously wrong areas of parking. So the center medians, the yellow curbs, but anywhere that's illegally parked, yes, you would be susceptible to towing.
Golf carts included?
If they're, yeah, if they're parked illegally. If they're, yeah, if they're parked illegally, that is correct.
Yeah, I think the challenge we need to address at some point is, we talked about this with the parking meters, because quite frankly, it's a hit and miss. So right now, as long as I'm in a parking space, I'm gonna be okay.
Correct, and this is a series of actions that you're gonna see, like Mr. Clifford alluded to. This is just one piece to the puzzle that'll be coming for, coming before you over the next few months of actions that council will take to improve our parking systems.
So we're beginning to plant the seed to kind of let people know, hey, here, this is coming.
Correct.
I mean, it is an issue. I bet, I don't know how many emails I get from people going down there, hey, that guy, truck's parked up there, you know, I mean, it's a mess.
Correct. This is good.
For the parking meters going?
That is for mayor and council to decide.
I say take them out.
That's a whole different conversation. But right now, it is not impacted. I know.
Up ahead of us.
This includes the three parking decks as well?
Yes, sir.
What, what would constitute illegal parking in a parking deck?
So if you park overnight, if we have a limit, say, just for example, we have a limitation where you cannot park overnight, you'd be towed. We have, in a part of our agreements with these apartments, they have designated spaces that they will be, the apartment towers will be able to park in for people who live there. Somebody was to park there that doesn't live there, you'd be removed, because you're not supposed to park there.
They'll have some kind of identification, I assume.
Correct. We're working with the apartment, the developers and the apartment kind of owners to, to work out that system that works best for them and their, and their residents.
Is that gonna be something similar to like, in downtown Columbia, office buildings, you see they have reserved spaces for specific law firm or something, and then general public's gotta go up another level or two?
That is correct. That's one of the models we are looking at bringing before council.
And that'll work the same, like if we've got employees in the medic building, they'll have identification on their vehicles, or they'll have to park in designated spaces over there as well?
Yes, that is the direction we're moving towards. Another direction just is the arms, we're looking to remove those, move to license plate readers, or something worth entertaining. Just the idea of ingress and egress to those parking decks has been a hindrance as well.
This is basically the first step of what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Bollards, and now we're moving to this.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for JD?
Okay, great, and then we get to move on to the next item, which is a little bit more fun, rather than being towed away. You get to, we just talked about Living History Parks, and this is the restoration of Living History Park. As you know, that was severely damaged in Hurricane Helene, and to get that repaired, we had to go out for bid, we had to follow our procurement process for, for every repair that's out there. We have some insurance money that has come in from MASCE, it doesn't cover all the costs to repair, and we also have, now we have, we'll have FEMA money coming in as well. What this did, we went out for bid to have all these repairs done, one company bid, and we'll be awarding that bid with this, with this resolution for those repairs. So hopefully we can get that back up and running, because that is one of our gems of North Augusta.
What's our timeframe on that?
The awarding of the bid would be, obviously, next week, and then it'll get started immediately. We're trying to have it done, can't make any promises, but we were really trying to have it done before their spring event. We can't, again, we can't make those promises, but that's, that's the goal. We're working very closely with Living History Park, Rick Meyer, behind me, and Tom Zizer are working very closely with Judy Dooley to make sure we meet these deadlines.
It's good, they're starting to come back together now, after this passing, I think. So we feel good about our communication with them, and we're moving forward.
We do, we have open communication with them, we have regular meetings. I've got nothing but positive feedback from them, although, as you can imagine, they want it done faster, which we can appreciate. No, no, we can appreciate that, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that it's a sustainable, long-term success for their, for their Living History Park.
Well, they're bored, you know, before, they're bored, they raised a lot of money to build those buildings. They don't participate in any of that now.
Well, and the agreement, and Kelly may, may jump in to correct him, but under the agreement, we hold the insurance for those buildings that were built as part of our agreement with them, and so that money we're getting from insurance is being reinvested in the park, and then also through FEMA. They've come through and done an assessment, and so all the repairs that are being done there will be run through FEMA, and so our goal is to have zero impact on the taxpayer to bring this Living History Park back to where it was, pre-Hurricane Helene.
The, the Living History Park is having an abbreviated event this weekend? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And they will be in what sections of the park, do you know? Carl, do you know?
I do not know, I may have to defer to Rick on that one, but I know it's around the same area that they had the, who did the Declaration of Independence reading, there's the areas that are safe, to kind of paraphrase, it's gonna be their areas that are safe for, for participants to be. Very limited, though.
Well, it's nice to see them back in the fold. They are, hey, they are absolutely a hidden gem, not even a hidden gem, they are a gem in our community. This is great news to me.
Excellent, you're good. Barring any questions, over to Jim. Thanks, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the agenda review for this evening, and so we'll go ahead and I'll turn it over to Jamie Power, City Clerk, for department details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First up is Finance, Linda Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to announce that I have graduated from a focus item back up onto department details. Our cycle two today is October 20th. Those bills were mailed timely on September 24th. Our cycle one due date is November 3rd, bills were mailed timely on October 9th. Finance has actually switched our printing companies, starting with our cycle one October bills. We have moved to a local printing company, and it's the one that we use for our mailing service, and we hope that you will notice that this bill, there'll be some color on the bills. The tax sale is scheduled for November 3rd. We currently have sixty-two properties starting, I'm sorry, we have sixty-two properties that are headed to the tax sale at this time. We are getting payments daily on those properties that we have posted. This Saturday will begin our Saturday postings, and they will run three consecutive Saturdays before the tax sale. That's all I have for you tonight.
So we have sixty-two right now, but then they can continue to pay right up until the date of the...
They can pay up to the morning of the sale. In fact, they can pay until they get sold.
Is that a lot of houses now? Sixty-two, I mean, I don't know.
No, that's pretty normal for this time. We posted over a hundred properties, so we've already had about half of them paid.
That's good. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up is Human Resources, Kayla Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tomorrow, we have our employee health fair at the community center. We hope to see you all there, and then on the back page of your department details is our employment list.
Next is Engineering and Public Works, Tom Zizer.
Good evening, I have four updates for you tonight. Firstly, city crews have began this morning installing the second of two valley gutters at intersection off Stanton Drive, that's the intersection of Stanton and Jackson Avenue, and this is just work to improve the drainage across those intersections. That intersection will be closed through, through Friday, by the time it should be reopened. Also, crews will be installing later this week a new aeration system down at Brick Pond Park. This is in addition to the ones we have in place currently, but this is a different type, it's a mechanical aeration system, so it will create a very visible frothy mound, I guess that's the best way, on the surface of the water, so just, it's just gonna be something new, and people may wonder what's going on out there, but that's, that's all that is.
Is there a way we can make sure we get something written up and get that sent out to the Brick Pond Park group?
Yes, sir.
It's not a fountain, but it's, it's gonna be something similar.
Okay, good.
Also, crews last week removed most of the damaged boardwalk out at the Walnut, what we call the Walnut Grove Park area, off of Walnut Lane. That removal was really just to give us the opportunity to be able to get in and assess the remaining of the structure for, for damage, and so we'll be doing that and deciding what can be repaired and what needs to be completely replaced, and hopefully begin that work in the very near future. That's great. You'll see some pictures of that, those damages, in my later presentation. And then also, lastly, crews will be installing the next rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Raywood Avenue. This is the strobe-like signal that we put one at the crosswalk of West and Pine Grove a while back. This is a very similar solar-powered, push-button activated, just to alert drivers that people are entering the crosswalk.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Planning and Development, Tommy Paradise.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we'll be having the planning commission meeting this Wednesday evening, and I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. James Sutton. He's agreed to come to the planning commission and give them a presentation on the utility system and answer the questions that they may have about how our utility system operates.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Next up is Public Services, James Sutton.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This Wednesday, the 15th, property maintenance will be in Hammond Hill subdivision spraying to control mosquitoes. Then next Wednesday, the 22nd, they will be in River North to conduct the year-end final spraying for mosquitoes. That doesn't mean that we will not provide service, we will, for customers who wants to come out and spot spray after that, they can contact the Public Services Department. Moving forward, the offer funded manual read meters to automated reader reading, where the utility department is scheduled to start on the 20th, which is next Monday, upgrading and replacing residential water meters in the Hammond Hill subdivision. That project will take approximately till year end of '26, it's gonna take a while. But during the process, someone will be notified, they don't necessarily have to be home, the meters will take approximately forty-five minutes to an hour to replace each one, and overall, it's gonna be a good project, it's gonna save some time for meter reading, some fuel costs, maintenance costs, mechanical costs, and get cost savings to the Public Utilities Department.
James, after you do Hammond Hills, you go to another section?
Yes, ma'am. Hammond Hills is the big part of it, we're gonna move to the main thoroughfares for safety purposes for the meter readers and change all of those out, but yes, ma'am, through the future, we will continue that program and add those to our system.
This is the first step in that, when we approve that, so this is the first time we've done it, right?
Well, we're adding to our current system.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Sutton, during that forty-five minutes, will the water service be turned off to the house?
It will, yes, sir.
And what your crew would tell them at that point?
We're gonna give advance notice, door not, they're home, let them know we're gonna cut it off, and have little instructions for them, what to do in case you're not home, they come home, have a little air in their lines, how to clear it out, what contact they have a problem with.
Thank you. Next up for public safety is Captain Sherman.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of updates, last weekend, we had one of our most successful trunk-or-treats to date. I was out there with my family, and it was probably one of the largest crowds I've ever seen. They had lines all the way around, roundabout out there, got a lot of good feedback from people out there, some was patting out there, and they said it was a good, family-friendly event, and just wanna give a shout out to Lieutenant Holtman and all the volunteers that make that event possible for this community. Also, last week, North Augusta Public Safety was awarded two South Carolina Department of Public Safety grants, and those grants for in-car cameras and body-won cameras, that basically helps out the city, and all of it was over seventy-six thousand dollars that'll go toward outfitting our officers in our cars. And the last thing we have for the update is, due to Captain Williams' retirement, that spawned the chain, so basically, we gotta go from bottom up. So a lot of promotions came last week, and I want to congratulate Lieutenant Kyle Golden, Sergeant Joe Waldrop, and Corporal Casey Neese for their promotions.
Awesome. Good stuff, thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Parks and Recreation, Rick Meyer.
Good evening. After a two-week break, all youth sports is back in session tonight. Yep, so Riverview Park and the soccer complex and the activities are all nice and crowded now. Note, on the Greenway team, with the fall season upon us, each Saturday morning, we'll have a member of the Greenway team blowing the Greenway until the leaves are all gone from the trees, make sure it's clean on the weekends. Also today, Riverview Park and Summerfield Park splash pads being closed until spring '26, now that the temperatures are dropping consistently below eighty degrees. Also today was the beginning of registration for a youth basketball program that'll run through November the 10th, and has our standard online registration and in-person registration accepted, and we had a fair amount of folks registering today already. Yes.
We're seeing that online really continue to pick up.
Yes, online registration is very, very good, which makes it easier on our staff as well. Lastly, like around the city, we have twelve employees this week taking defensive driving course, trying to make sure that we do our part. Well, it's a course that teaches employees how to drive defensively, you know, instead of on the offense, you're looking out for someone coming in different directions, and it, you know...
Councilman, that's, this is an initiative we have for the entire city staff, and it's just Parks and Rec, so this is a program that we were able to take part in through NAC and the risk pool, it helps us with our overall insurance costs, and because of the success of the program elsewhere, we're requiring that for our city employees, and we have multiple sessions that are actually taking place in this room during the duty day for multiple folks to include our public safety, and anybody that drives a vehicle in the city, we're requiring them to go through that program.
It's a great idea. Good job.
Thank you. And to conclude, department details is Tourism, Carl Walhalla.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Later this week, the 51st Annual Mid-South Sociological Association Conference will be here in North Augusta, starting on Wednesday, and that conference finishes up on Saturday. A hub of activities can be around the Crown Plaza, and approximately two hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five visitors will all around the southeast will be around, and, you know, frequent our restaurants and shops, you see a lot of visitors in town. Last time this conference in South Carolina was over ten years ago in North Charleston, so we're excited to have a longstanding conference come, come check us out this week. Jackland Jubilee is less than two weeks away, festival kicks off on Friday, October 24th, with True North Band playing 6:00 PM, and Matthew West following up at 7:30. And then our traditional festival will go into Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM, with our traditional local performers, vendors, food vendors, rides, and all that. It'll wrap up towards the main stage at 6:00 PM, the Guardians of the Jukebox, followed by Headliner Blues Traveler at 8:00 PM.
Just letting you know, tell Jen and your team that Dr. Johnson with the Mid-South group was very complimentary of ENA and everything y'all did to help.
She's been great to work with, you know, she put in a bid for, she really liked the area.
She's at UC Atkins.
She is, she's a professor at UC.
Anyway, just...
Ironically, no, not her to compliment you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
That concludes department details, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Clifford.
If I have our IT department, Ricky, could put up the NRSC, NRSC slides, and we'll have Tom Zizer coming up to the podium and make his presentation.
Who all remembers that day? Next slide. So, so, yeah, I'm just gonna outline this grant that we were fortunate to receive from the NRCS, and just give you a, basically, a status of where we stand today with it. So first there is, is a quote right off the grant instrument that kind of gives the basis for the grant. EWP stands for Emergency Watership Protection, so this grant is, is not just to clean up trees, it's to, it's to, it's to, for impacts to primarily waterways, it's to, it's to correct dam... It's to, it's to correct damages and remove obstructions from those waterways that pose risk to life or property. And so this grant doesn't do nearly as much as we would have liked it to do, but it's really, we're fortunate to get it again. So again, we're, the purpose of the grant is to remove trees and debris, sediment, and also to stabilize some bank erosion in multiple locations throughout the city. The grant, the budget is, was based on a, an estimate. To be honest with you, that estimate was very hard to derive. We had no basis, you know, we got a creek full of, full of trees. I mean, we had no basis from which to even have any idea of how much it would cost to remove those materials from that stream. And so we threw our best numbers at it, and then the NRCS, on top of that number, they add a flat seven and a half percent for what they call technical assistance. Those funds can be used for our own administrative costs or if we have to outsource any assistance such as engineering services. And so that's what we're doing with those funds, is we did employ an engineer to handle one specific design assignment that I'll show you in a minute. And of course, those funds weren't nearly enough to cover those design fees, so several months ago, council authorized a resolution to provide additional funding specifically towards that design effort. The timeline, again, the official disaster date was 9/26, so I guess that's when it came ashore down in Florida in Hurricane Helene, I mean. And then we get, we, after a lot of back and forth with the NRCS about the grant, what was included, what was not, our official request letter went out on November 1st. Funds were allocated on November 15th, and from that date, per USDA guidelines, they, the grant period is 220 days from the date the funds are allocated. That sounds like a long time, but it actually took until March of '28, March 28th of this year, for them to actually produce a executed agreement award for us. So by that time, we only had technically two months left to complete all the grant work, which was impossible, so we immediately applied for an extension, which was granted. And that extension completion date is March 26, '26. Next slide. So I'll run through the sites. These aren't in priority order, although this, this site here is our first priority. This is really the site that got NRCS to come to North Augusta and open the door for the remainder of the work. So this is at what formerly known as Willowick Apartments. There's a creek, it's actually Pole Branch Creek that approaches that apartment complex. And, next slide, please. So you can see some of the erosion, severe erosion that occurred along their entrance road. The picture on your left is looking upstream. You see the power lines and telephone lines that were down during the hurricane. Well, actually, the, the black cables you see there were in the ground, and, and they became exposed due to the erosion. And then the picture on the right is just the same, looking downstream. Next slide. The main reason why this site was included was not because of the erosion, was because that white pipe you see there is an active sewer line that serves a portion of the apartment complex, and it was washed out, and it's been repaired in this photo. And the potential for that sewer line to breach and flow into the creek is really what, what made this site eligible, as well as the impact to the roadway that provides emergency access to the apartment complex. And then downstream from there, there are some trees in the creek that, which will also be removed as part of this grant work. Next slide. So this is just, I know you probably can't really see what's going on here, but this is just a page from the engineer design that's, that's at approximately 90% complete. And so the, the approach is going to be to install armoring along the creek bank and also to excavate and widen the creek bank and attempt to shift it back to its historic channel away from the roadway. And this is just an example of what that should look like. Our wall will be, are, will be somewhat taller than what's shown in this image here, but that's very similar to what we hope the final product will look like. As, as I mentioned, that those plans are at approximately 90% complete. They have been submitted to NRCS for their final review, which, of course, they are not in the office at this time, so we're kind of on hold with that work for the time being until they are back at work and can give us the go-ahead for that, for that construction, which that may, this actual closure may open the door for a further extension on the end of the grant.
I was about to say, they're not working, let's get this done by March.
Right, right. In the meantime, we are beginning to assemble bid documents for the rest of these sites, which are primarily just debris removal from waterways. This site here is, is along Pretty Run Creek. This is up near Knollwood subdivision, sort of between Knollwood and the Greenway up there. And so it's just a, an area that was impacted with a lot of trees down. Next slide. And this is just a picture from that site. There's also a sewer line that parallels that creek, so a lot of these trees are also laid across a sewer right-of-way. This is another section of Pretty Run downstream. This is, some of you may know, this is the Catfish Mackey property. And so now these are, the previous site I showed you was all city property. I'm sorry, that one was private property, as well as this one. And so we are going to be relying on property owners to give us easements or rights of access to those properties. Otherwise, we won't be able to conduct this work. And there's some pictures along that stretch of Pretty Run. I'm sorry, I think we skipped one. You go back? Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is right. But I also wanted to point out, there was a, there was a parcel. Sorry, Ricky, back one, please. Down in the lower, lower corner of your screen, you see a parcel that's in the Rapid subdivision. That's one that some of y'all may have gotten, some complaints from a resident there. And so that is another privately-owned piece that will be, those trees will be removed. Now, all these sites here, again, the, the grant will, is to remove trees from the waterway. So now, if there's trees laying 100 feet away from the stream, we're not going to be removing those trees unless it's necessary for us to remove them to get to the stream. But, so we will not be doing complete property cleanup on these sites. Next slide. And then these are just more images along that section of Pretty Run. Next slide. More of the same. This is the site I mentioned earlier. This is the Walnut Lane area. This is what we call Carolina Bay off of Walnut Lane. It has a boardwalk bisecting it, and that entire parcel is primarily a wetland, so this is one that we do expect to do. The majority of this site will be, those trees will be removed since this is a wetland property. Next slide. This is a little hard to see, but this is an aerial image before Helene, and you just see the density of the tree canopy through that, through that parcel. Can't even see the boardwalk. And this is, it's, it's kind of dark, but if you see the right side, you can see all the trees laying down. Yeah, it's the same site. Next slide. And so these are some close-ups, so you can see the boardwalk there in the lower left with the trees, the scale of the trees, size of the trees that are down in this, in this area. Next slide. And there you see some of the other damages to the boardwalk from the uprooted trees. That's all the section that I mentioned earlier, it's all been removed now. This is a parcel, well, we call it the Waterworks Creek, so includes multiple parcels that extend from the entrance to the River Club down in the very bottom, up through Waterworks Park, the Dog Park, crosses Buena Vista through Maude Edenfield Park, and then above Spring Grove, basically along the rear entranceway to Plaza Place Apartments. Down the, the lower site there, the River Club parcel, that was, that was a sediment removal project that we've already completed. Next slide. There's more images, more of the same. Next slide. And that's the, the sediment island that had formed there. And we, we think of Hurricane Helene as a primarily wind event here, which it was, but it was also a pretty significant rainfall event. And so this is some of the sediment load that was deposited on that site. And since this one was a very, pretty straightforward, we've already contracted and had that work completed. Next slide. That's what it looks like today. Next slide. Site six, again, is multiple parcels in the Crystal Lake Basin. The upper part is what's, a lot of people don't know, the pond there at Jackson and Mocatine, it's actually called Briggs Pond. That one's going to be a very difficult site to work. The access up in there is, there is no access, so that one is, it's probably not going to be at the top of our priority list, but we'll make every effort to get in there and get those removed, as well as the parcel below there. These are all city-owned parcels, so access won't be a problem for us. Next slide. And then in that same drainage basin, two parcels, most of city-owned, but the other one is owned by the, what we call the Hannah property. It's the heir to Mike Hannah's the owner. And so just, again, working that creek down to Crystal Lake. That's all the sites. Again, just want to reiterate, you know, we're, this work is primarily just to remove what's obstructing, any tree we touch, you know, will be removed in its entirety. We're going to accomplish just as much as we can in the grant, but that site, until we get that site number one, bid and have a handle on the cost of that work, really can't proceed to bid award or contract award with the remaining sites until we get that one, until we know what our, our remaining budget will be.
Is there a way, as we go through these sites, that you can somehow get us that information with the timeline, because we'll get asked about it, so I mean, it's going to be important. This is good information, so I mean, I've read several emails about Walnut Lane, so I can respond to that. You know, we get hit a ton with a few people talking about, you know, some other subdivisions. So when we do get to those points, if somehow we can make sure we get that information out or at least let us be aware so we can be proactive, I think would be helpful.
Whenever you.
Yeah, yeah, once we have that. And in fact, we're also considering having multiple contracts if it's, if we feel like that's an advantage to us to get, just for the, just for the speed of getting the, the sites cleaned up.
And just, I will say for our citizens, I know Jim has shared it with counsel, Tom Zeezer was very proactive, and probably, if Tom had not been here, we wouldn't be getting this grant. I mean, he, he and his staff jumped on this very early, and the Willowick piece is the one that kind of like spearheaded everything. But that's just really good work, Tom. Thank you for your leadership on that, and these are definitely areas that we need to get done for our city, so.
I will mention, for what it's worth, thank you for those comments, but we do have another grant application in, actually, for the same program. We were advised that we were still eligible to apply. And again, we, we put this together, my staff that put this grant together originally, I mean, it was, it was chaotic then, and we didn't even know where all the damaged sites were. I mean, we just had no, had the time to fully assess, so we just grabbed what we knew, what we thought we could, but we've put together another batch of debris removals in a grant application for, I believe it was 1.3 million. And so that application is, is again, at NRCS, waiting for them to come back to work. So we're hopeful for a successful award on that grant as well.
You and your entirely large team that you have, we're very lean here in the city, so anyway, get out there, argue.
Mr. Zeezer, quick question. The removal of the trees, will there be a holding yard for them, or will they be disposed of as they're collected, similar to what we had for Helene? When you pick them up and take them somewhere and chop them up, or did we take them straight to a landfill?
Yeah, it will be, the contractor will be responsible for their removal in their entirety.
When they, when they pick the tree up out of, out of the creek, they'll dispose of it at that point?
Correct. We will have provisions in there. There, there will be some locations where we will, we may allow to them to be reduced in place, basically ground in place and left and dispersed in the wooded areas where we feel like that will be, not create any further problem for either the city or, or the private property owner.
You anticipate any pine beetle problems like we had during the last tree removals? So that the, the downed trees that have been down now for almost a year, in fact, they have been down a year, is there any, any concern with what's in them now?
I, I.
Don't know.
Couldn't, I can't answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. We'll go ahead and move over to the last item on the focus, item areas, which is under the option to amend the dates for the general election for the City of North Augusta. So something we've been discussing, at least within the staff for a number of years, the city currently has its election cycle in May, and we obviously went through an election cycle this, this year here in 2025. And one of the things we're seeing through that is really, there's two significant challenges at least from the staff perspective. So one is the cost of running an election. So because it's running an off-cycle, not with the federal election, that any costs that are born for running the election are borne solely by the city. So we have to pay the Municipal Election Commission to administer a election on our behalf, not to include the overtime or the work that we have to have for our city staff out there with the polling places and the community center and running all those things. So that, that usually costs us somewhere in the ballpark of $10,000 to $14,000 to run a, a general election here for, for the city. And the other part of that comes down to just overall voter turnout. And so we've seen that you get the maximum amount of voter turnout through a, you know, federal election cycle, so much like Senator Tom Young and Representative Bill Hickson on the election cycle thereon, you get, you know, better voter participation during those times. And so based on guidance from the mayor, Kelly Zero was asked to do some research about what steps would be required to move a, an election cycle. And so there's a few different options out there. And so one of the options is to lengthen the term of the city council members, and one option is to shorten the term of the city council members. And again, based on guidance that I had from the mayor at the time, is to look more at the, removing six months of the term for all council members. So essentially, if this would go through and be considered by council, the next election for city council members would be on the federal election cycle of November of 2026 and subsequent even years beyond that, so November 2030, '32, and so on. And so with that, I would, you know, Kelly's done some research, and I don't want to put words on the state attorney's mouth because I'm not an attorney, but it seems like, based on the research that he's done, that you, as the council, have the ability to set the election timeframe, that there is not a requirement to go through, you know, the, the federal government at this time, whether the, the state of South Carolina, although Kelly's asked for an opinion from the AG's office about, you know, what that would look like. So Kelly is already deep, in deep waters here, talking about what you're doing. I'd ask you to brief the council on your findings.
Okay. Well, basically, I'd say it is up, it's fairly simple, that there have been Attorney General's opinions since about 2000, with a number of cities that have changed. Opinions have all basically said the same, that the state. Opinions have all basically said the same, that the state granted to the municipalities the right to establish the dates, which means you can change the dates. And it said, as a result of doing that, obviously, there's got to be an increase or decrease in terms, and that's totally authorized, as long as there's no question about that it's not being done for a city purpose. Can't be done because a councilman wants to serve a little longer or something like that. But, I mean, it's very clear and very easy that council has the absolute right to do this. The other thing I was checking, and I wouldn't think it would be a problem, even if we had to get it pre-cleared, as you're aware, under the 65 Voting Rights Act, anything, a number of states, that anything that was being done related to change, have any impact on voting, had to be pre-cleared through the Justice Department. And in about 2013, there was a case where it was determined that the information or the data that was required was outdated, and the Supreme Court did away with that requirement. But there was still another portion of the act that there could be an action brought that would require a state to be brought in to have to continue to do that. I'm not aware that that's ever taken place in South Carolina, and that's the one thing I'm trying to get confirmed through the Attorney General's office. Should be a very simple thing. We either are required or not required to, and I'm 90% sure at this time that we don't have to get any pre-clearance.
Also, Kelly, there, for the council's notification, there are some discussion going on within the state legislature about city elections and county elections, because they're kind of all over the map. You've got some that are kind of in the spring of even and odd years, you've got some that are in November of even and odd years. And so there's some discussion in legislature about exhibiting some level of control on that to get folks into a tighter window of, you know, which election cycles they can be on. I know the municipal association is resisting, you know, that particular action within the legislature, but regardless, I think if the city council decided to move the election cycle onto the federal election cycle, there would be low to no risk of the state of South Carolina imposing some other change on the election cycle here within the city of North Augusta. So there was a draft ordinance, it was not in the Friday pack, but you have a hard copy there on your desk, and so for the issue of transparency, I'll read kind of the most important part here for the citizens that are watching online and also in attendance, which is, "All general elections for election of mayor and members of the city council shall be held on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November in even numbered years or at such times as further set by ordinance. Special elections shall be conducted in accordance with state law. Any runoff elections necessary in regard to general or special elections shall be held two weeks following the date of the original election. Subsequent runoff elections will be held at two-week intervals." So essentially, that puts us into a, you know, a federal election cycle, so much like Representative Hickson and Senator Young on the cycle that they're on, understanding that, you know, Representative Hickson's on a two-year cycle, and Senator Young's on a four-year cycle, I would still line up with those style election dates. So that's before you, at least for consideration. We didn't want to just list it as an ordinance for y'all's discussion, because obviously this is an important topic for the city and for you as the city council members, because ultimately, if you opted to go forward with this, you would all be taking a six-month decrement to your terms, unless you gave, you know, counter guidance, or you also have the option to not even consider this ordinance and leave your elections as they are today. But we wanted to at least give you a staff option for moving this on to the federal election cycle. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I turn it back to you for discussion, debate, but if there's any feedback that you want to give to the staff as far as the crafting of this ordinance, or whether you even want this ordinance to be considered in a future council meeting, then we're open to your inputs.
Well, I would like to say that I have probably been around this particular issue for at least 25 or 30 years, from when I first started getting involved locally. And state rules and state laws have changed, which has made it more difficult for local groups to hold elections. You know, one time, you could have an election location, a polling location, in one spot. And years ago, Kelly, you would probably remember this, and Pat, it was, it was a big tent put in down on Georgia Avenue, and that's where everybody came to vote, and it was just a huge, huge event in the city. Yeah, and everybody got along, right? Yeah. And then there were some state guidelines that were issued that said that if you could only, you could combine polling locations if a certain number of voters didn't exceed a certain number, and I think that's 1,500 voters. So even though the state intended to help local elections do that, it really couldn't combine much. You might be able to get from 13 polling locations down to 11, and that was about it. It didn't take many, and that's eligible voters in that district.
Yeah, well, I think there are also distance requirements from your home to where you voted. As we have grown, we're not all down on Georgia Avenue.
Yeah, I think distance was three miles, if I'm not mistaken, and we really never got guidance whether that was three miles as the crow flies, or three miles as you drive, and which road you take to get there. So if it were three miles as the crow flies, then you could maybe do it in two locations, and that became much more affordable for everyone. Many times, polling managers are paid to sit there for 10 voters for a whole day, and it became very difficult. In past years, too, primary elections were volunteers, and the general elections were paid. And we had a huge number of people that would, it would be the same people, and you could, they just expected that. They know for the primary, they volunteered their time, and then it's 12 hours of time. And then in the general election, they were paid for it. And then now everybody has to be certified, and you have to recertify every selection, every election. There was even discussion whether the, if you were certified for a primary, whether you could be, whether that counted for the general election. And I think they had, eventually had said they would. So there were reasons not to do this for many years, and reasons to do it for many years. One of the biggest objections to not doing it was an educated electorate, that if you were going to vote in a local election, even though the numbers were small, you kind of had a, you know, a horse in the race. You were educated on who was running and who wasn't. Now you go to a poll, and you can even see elections that I had no idea that person was running, or the day before the election, say, who's running? So it's really, it really puts the onus on the voter to educate themselves on all of those elections that are coming up, council, mayor, state representatives, county representatives. I think it will definitely achieve a higher voter turnout, which I think is very good for us. I don't think it favors one or the other. I think, as we've seen in the past, recent past, that you can be elected from either side of the aisle, and I think that's encouraging. It wasn't maybe a generation or two ago that Dennis's side of the aisle was, that was the entire electorate. And, you know, things change over time. I think locally, people vote for people and issues. I think we've seen that. So I personally support it. I know the primary side of it is that payment responsibility falls on local parties, and it is expensive. It's about $8,500 for the party to do that, and if there's a runoff, it's another $8,500. So I think it, I think it's a great idea. I would absolutely be in favor of it. Thank you for bringing it up.
Anybody else?
I mean, I really don't have anything to add, other than to agree with John's points. You know, the only hesitation I've ever had over it is the argument, which I think is a compelling argument, that you do have an educated electorate showing up, but you also don't have a lot of people showing up that would, that would get educated if, you know, if they knew the election were coming up. I mean, it's such a, it's such an odd time to have it, that it's, you know, it's, it just makes sense to make the change. I mean, it gets more people active. It costs the city less money, it puts you in line with what everybody else is, or at least what the other offices within this, you know, within this municipality are voting for. So I would generally support it as well.
I would agree with a lot of Mr. Philax's comments. This past election was a lot of chaos in the polling stations. I had people calling me all day long, where do I go? Where do I go? It was one place during the primary, and then it was a second place during the election, and it was just very, very confusing. And I think by moving it, it will keep our, it'll keep everybody in the same polling location that they're used to going to on a regular basis, and just eliminate a lot of that confusion. So I would definitely be for this.
I agree. We had people calling us up to the very last minute because of the consolidated polls. People would just be getting off of work and just having enough time to vote and end up going to the wrong place and not get to vote at all, which I don't think was fair. I'm all about empowering people to vote. I recognize the fact that we live in a right-to-work state, and most of the people that live here drive out of our community, and Georgia's also a right-to-work state. And, you know, it's hard to go to your employer sometimes, if you're the little guy, and say, hey, my city just happens to have an election on this random Tuesday in April, can I please have off of work to go vote? It does, it creates an awkward situation for the voter, because the boss might be like, sure, fine, I have to legally let you off to vote, but again, it's a right-to-work state, whatever the reason. So, I mean, I want to see more working-class people in our city vote. We had an abysmal voter turnout for the amount of registered voters we have, 15%. Even though it could cost me six months of my term, I don't care. It's worth it to me to give power back to the people that could come and vote. And, I mean, as far as having an educated voter, that's why I also support our local city election being nonpartisan. I find myself voting with y'all 80, 90% of the time. I see, I see an opportunity for us to set an example for the nation to run on individual platforms, where voters truly have to educate themselves and pick a person over a party. Because, I mean, I don't always vote with my party line. I vote with what the people tell me that I need to vote for. I vote for the people, you know, I go with the people that stood up for me and voted for me. And I think it's important that we get this through and get this done, and get it lined up with the federal election to reduce the awkwardness on the working-class people. And I think we should move to nonpartisan races.
Well, yeah, I think the more people we have to vote, the better. So I think it's all very positive, and I think we're in good shape, so.
I go along with everybody else, Jim. I support this, and I think it'd be better for all the citizens.
More the mayor.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I think what I've gathered as far as from a guidance perspective is that we'll put this on the agenda formally for next week for consideration as an ordinance that'll require two readings. So the first reading of this ordinance would be next week.
Yep.
Subject area questions? That's all I have from the staff, although I know, Mr. Mayor, you've got to read off the executive session.
Oh, yeah. Okay, the only I'm going to, yeah, I'm not, Carl mentioned everything about Jack Lang Jubilee is coming up in two weeks, going to be a great weekend. So downtown, we'll have it blocked off, small-town America, so I hope you'll come down and support it. So at this point... Yes, ma'am? I know, okay. All right, in compliance with Section 30-4-70A2, the city attorney requests an executive session for a purpose of discussion specifically related to Riverside Village. So I would ask for, is there a motion that we go into executive session? There's a first by, Ms. Carpenter is her second?
Second.
Mr. Tool, okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all for being here, and we let this hope, see you on next Monday.